Thank you President Humble and we're so excited to share with you the Iowa School's performance profile. I'm Rob Dooley, the Chief of Equity in the Office of Learning and Leadership. So I'll give some high level overview and then Eric is going to talk about elementary schools. Gary Hadfield is going to talk about middle schools and then Cynthia is going to talk about high schools. So get the clicker. Alright, so school accountability under the Every Student Succeeds Act, each state has to take that federal act and interpret it for the state and the act requires states to develop standards for accountability, to set achievement goals, to identify schools that need support or to improve and then ultimately publish report cards that have data and information that helps schools know where they need to improve. And they use performance measures to get at a score for the schools and you can see the different areas here of measures all the way from the new Iowa Assessment, the ISS, to graduation rates, student growth, conditions for learning, talks about kind of the school climate, safety in the schools, post-secondary readiness that gets into the career tech ed courses and pathways. Schools then receive a designation based on a score, so they aggregate some of those performance measures into a score and a school gets a rating from exceptional all the way to priority or comprehensive with priority being the lowest scores as you see. And our results, you'll see the number of schools that fell into each category. The exciting news about this, the schools that we had in 2017 that fell in meets improvement in priority, so below the acceptable level, there were 13 schools and so you can see that we've moved from 13 to just five schools that fell in that category, so great work. And then those buildings that might have a designation, they would have two designations of either comprehensive schools, so they really fell in the lowest areas and you can see some of those measures there, or targeted, schools that might need some targeted support and we had nine buildings fall into that this year. I think last year there were 16 buildings that fell into that, so again improvement is made. So now I really want to get to our highlights. This is really good news. Superintendent Bush is, it's, he's bouncing off of us because that's such good news. And so let me go at the district level. Twenty-four of our 21 schools increased their numeric results. Seventeen schools moved up in their rating category and six of those moved up two categories, so really great news there. Ten schools maintained their categories and what you saw in the last chart, there were no priority schools, no priority schools this year and in 2017 we had seven schools that were. So great work on staying focused on this. No comprehensive schools this year on the report card. Twenty-two of our schools received no designation, so they were not comprehensive nor targeted and then nine schools received targeted status. So this is great news to see, you know, from our state assessment that we are moving in the right direction, that schools are taking their school improvement plans very seriously and really are doing the work that it's going to take to move us forward. So Eric, if you'll.
How do you do yourself? Can I ever get this thing on? Still under my car.
Just point back there. Click.
There we go. Well, good evening, Professor Humbles and the board. It's my pleasure to highlight the elementary school level in terms of our profile. Some of this is repeat, Rob already went through, but really excited at the elementary level. Fifteen out of our 21 schools increased their numeric results or what we call the index. Nine schools actually moved up in their rating category, eight schools maintained and four schools moved down and when I, to be very transparent, to move down, we had a couple of schools that were cited or they're indexed for their IEP students, so we're working with those schools right now. And one school, the African-American population. So we're addressing those, are those two schools and the other two who I think IEP and ELL kids. So we'll look on those four. Really, really excited to share this though and I'm going to give a big shout out to CRA at Taylor. They were designated as comprehensive last year and they are not comprehensive this year. They actually went up 13 points on their numeric scale and it is kind of emotional to me. I've worked with Andrea, the principal over at Taylor. They are doing fantastic work right now. They're a magnet school as most of us know as well, so they're kicking that off, but it's really happening over there. So a big shout out to CRA in that they did meet the comprehensive school status this year. Eighteen out of our 21 schools received no designation. Three schools received targeted, kind of alluded to that a few seconds ago. So basically our focus areas for these schools that are targeted, African-American students, students with IEPs or special education students and then English language learners. Reflecting on this presentation, I just want to spend a minute to share with you some thoughts. I've been here a long time in this school district. I'm extremely proud of what's happening right now at the elementary level. K-12, but of course I put this on the elementary, I'm a little kid, I love that. But I started thinking about, you know, why are we getting the results that we're getting? And first and foremost is the teachers, I'll be honest with you. Our principals are leading and having some courageous conversations with some people, but it is the classroom teacher that's making the difference. The other really paramount piece to this is our instructional coaches that are coaching teachers and giving them the necessary feedback through a nonevaluated way. So those are just wonderful things that are happening this year and they have happened over the course of years. And then I guess the last thing I want to share with you is our focus on literacy. This is year four, I believe, in that, and I'm not going to get too deep with you tonight, but we have what's called a word recognition lesson plan that we adopted three to four years ago and the person I replaced steerheaded that, Val Bozal, and I was really involved in that with her and that has really made a difference in terms of teaching teachers how to teach explicitly. The other thing is that we have 12 schools going through what's called PROPEL and it's a long acronym that basically means this. Twelve schools have been identified where a team of teachers, admin, AEA staff meet on a weekly basis to study literacy moves and instruction and they're looking at data every single week at those 12 schools. And then finally, the other part is the PLPs. We have 250 teachers roughly going through what's called letters training and again it is a pretty intense process. If you talk to teachers across the district, they either can get a stipend or credit obviously for taking this PL, but it goes back to the science of reading. Science of reading can be very complicated at times for those of us that have taught reading, but those teachers that are within this letters training, intense, but getting feedback and a lot of collaboration going on amongst those 250 teachers depending on what class they're in. So I'm excited, very excited. I was just willing to see these results as a lot of us were. Do we have work to do? Absolutely. We always have work to do. That's part of the job, obviously, but I'm very proud at this point and things are just moving, are looking up and continue to improve. That's Mr. Hadfield.
Gary Hadfield, I'm the principal at Taff Middle School, my 12th year there, 27 years in the district and I, middle school's near and dear to my heart. I taught at Wilson and Franklin, I was associate principal at Roosevelt, now principal over at Taff for 12 years, so I'm a lifer. So it's good to be here talking to you about our scores. It's exciting to see the scores go up as they have. We had six schools, it was mentioned before, that went up by two levels on their ESAS designations and two of those were in middle school. So that's really nice to see. You know, again, I'm partial to middle school, but I view that as an incredibly crucial time for our kids. It's very pivotal as middle or elementary to high school that those middle school years are exceptional. So as mentioned, our ESAS designation scores, five of our six schools went up in their numeric value, so that's the actual score that they went up in, not necessarily the designation. Four schools moved up in their rating and again, as I mentioned, two of those schools went up by two levels, so that's pretty fantastic. We had two schools that maintained their rating and no schools decreased, which is fantastic, so, and that's again decreased in their rating. As far as comprehensive schools, no comprehensive schools. We did have three schools that received no designation at all and by no designation, again, that means that there were no targeted areas that they needed to work on as far as the ESAS designation indicated. Three schools did receive targeted status, but in each of those cases, the number of targeted areas went down. One school, for example, last year was targeted in multiple areas, all the racial subgroups plus ELL plus IEP and this year it's only IEP. So although it still looks like targeted status, that targeted status is much, much less than what it has been in the past. And then of course our focus areas, if you look through our data, we're going to continue to work on African-American scores, that's important to us as well, as well as the students with disabilities. I did ask each of the middle school principals to give me something that they were proud of in the scores and so I'm going to share this with you as well. I asked them actually for three, but for time, so gave them a little less to work. But Franklin was one of the schools that went up by two ESAS designations, so they are very proud of that. As was Harding, Harding also went up by two designations. We had McKinley, they said they were proud that they were no longer targeted for their low socioeconomic students or their free introduced lunch students, which is again fantastic. Roosevelt shared with me that they exceeded state growth for ELL by 4%, free introduced lunch by 3% and IEPs by 7%. So great things happened at Roosevelt. At Taff, I was very proud of our achievement in reading. We are well above the state average for everything, for all students, lower SES students, IEP students, African-American students, Hispanic students, multiracial and white. The only thing that, and I don't quite understand this, we didn't have data for Asian students. Usually when you have under a certain number of students in your building, they don't report that data and I would feel like we have enough Asian students that are willing to have that, but if you check the website, there's no data reported for that area. And then Wilson was proud that they removed as targeted status their African-American students and their multiracial students. So again, fantastic things happen in all those areas. I think the reasons why we're moving forward in those is largely due to our push on literacy. That's been led through many different groups. The principals group is one, the instructional coach group is the other, that have really been pushing this endeavor. Complex text is hugely important to our students. The amount of exposure we can give them to complex text really increases their capacity for reading, their capabilities in learning as they move forward. And I was thinking about the experience that I had the other day at Taff. I went and I was observing a social studies classroom and that teacher, I just walked in and started observing and as I was watching, I was thinking to myself, they were doing a close read of an historical text and I felt like I was in a language arts classroom. And that's really what we're looking for because the literacy instruction that we're doing for all of our teachers is not just in language arts. It's for our math teachers, our social studies teachers, we have them all there. We have, we have our PE teachers working on vocabulary instruction. So it's important that we have all those pieces. So the close read of text is one really important piece and the other really important piece is pushing that vocab. And if we'll say accountability measures such as SS, sometimes they get a little bit of a bad rap because people hear these scores and everything, but the process of going through the SS system here, when we received our scores last year, we met and we spent three days looking at our buildings, looking at how we can improve, looking at things we can change and we did that with a team and was supported by ELSC staff as well as some Grantwood AA staff. That was hugely important and it's one of the reasons why the scores went up as they did. So the schools were able to look at their buildings, you know, see what they wanted to work on and really dig in and get going. As mentioned, this is my 27th year in the district, I've never been happier to be here. I see good things ahead for us and I'm just looking forward to the path ahead. Any questions? And they only give me.
Not until the end.
Not until the end.
Good evening Directors. I'm Cynthia Valt, I'm Executive Director for High Schools and I guess I'm the newbie on the panels, my first year here in Cedar Rapids, serving the students and staff and community in the district. Very excited to be here and this is fantastic information to be looking at and then to really reflect on what is making the difference. So for all four of our high schools increased both in their numeric rating and their category ratings, so it's very exciting and one of our schools moved up two categories. That particular school also reduced their targeted designations from four to one. So with our designations, none of our high schools are comprehensive schools, two of them received no designation and we do have two schools that received targeted status and that was with the subgroups for IEPs or special education. So those are already some focus areas that we are looking at. When I think about the work as I transitioned in and seeing some of the movement as we're going through high reliability schools work and those teams that are put together, academic roadmap that's been set forth, getting really clear on at the high school level what our guaranteed viable curriculum is and so this is being very clear on what our standards are and what we're teaching, how we're teaching, how we're asking kids to be assessed over those and then how we're giving feedback and communicating so that students can be engaged in that. So I think those are some critical pieces that we're starting to layer in and continue to get professional learning around and move forward. Specifically, our work this year at the high school level became pretty apparent that we needed to really look at MTSS system, which is a multi-tiered system of supports for our students. These are pretty robust in some of the younger grades, which is typical in school districts. High school is a unique setting to deal with some of the multi-tiered system of supports. So we've been doing learning around what this can look like for tier one, which is basically what's our goal for all students to have access to, because this is the difference maker in student engagement at the high school level. Student engagement often drops to about 33% at the high school level, so we need to do a better job of making sure that we're connecting with students and helping them see that their learning is relevant. And so we're spending time around that along with other work that we're doing to support specific pathways for kids. So there's many different ways that we can pursue our education and our post-secondary life. So making sure that we're defining those and we've got a system in place to support students and whatever pathway that may be and that they can switch pathways too as we grow and learn and have our interests change. So I would say that's some of the work that I've become familiar with here and I continue to lead and support and am really passionate about so that we can have all of our students have just the best experience possible in preparation going forward after graduation. Thank you.
I'm asked that all of them to come back up, so I'm sure that you have questions or, I don't know. So one of the things that comes with the report card, any time a school does have a designation of comprehensive, then the state is going to come and do a visit to provide support, not a compliance, but how do we continue to help support you. So last year Taylor was the one that was designated comprehensive, so we do have a site visit coming up, March 24th, 26th. And it won't really be focused on that school, it's going to be really focused on the district and what are the frameworks and things that we have in place to provide support to all of our buildings. Alright, so questions?
First of all, I'd like to thank you guys for the presentations and we really owe a lot of thanks to our teachers in this district. Great work, we've made great strides and we know that there's still work that we need to do and I'm surprised that Noreen is just sitting here so calmly, but we do, we owe it to our teachers too. They're in their day-to-day taking care of our students, so I thank them. And also, if the board has any questions, and I'd like to remind them out of respect for the presenters, to maintain the focus on this body only and that ask questions that are relevant to the presentation. So are there any questions from the board?
I have a question. We talk about targeted focus areas, can you talk just a little bit about how the supports you've put in place over, and the work that you've done over the past year supports student at all, students at all levels and not just the focus areas? Any level, doesn't it?
Yeah, and I would say, you probably heard that through our level, the tier one supports that Cynthia talked about, each area has tier one supports, that is, this is what every student gets and what every student should expect. And so throughout the course of really the last several years, we have had a focus on strengthening those tier one supports and I would say that some of that really is showing up in this data.
I think at the elementary level, the other focus has been when the student is not reaching proficiency at the core level, we have spent, it's been two or three years now that we are running some intervention support and the district is working with title one teachers. Okay, what's that look like when a student is struggling in reading and we have all this data? Let's drill down, let's look at the specific skills that they need and the title one teachers that are there to provide additional support are looking again at the word recognition lesson plan and there's fidelity checks along the way so that we make sure that we are really focusing in on those kids that are struggling. Seems to help.
Do you mind if I just jump in?
I know.
Professor Humbles is sorry, she got on the car so long. So through our high reliability schools framework, that has become common language vertically. So it's really, Principal Hadfield mentioned this earlier, we did these intense days of study with our, each building brought their leadership team together and we facilitated as a community how to take a deeper dive around our school improvement plans. The school improvement plans are for all students, but then also in addition to that, beyond tier one instruction, what's tier two, tier three. So they dug in on their own data about what do we need to improve for everyone as well as designated particular areas. But in the first three levels of high reliability schools, first is a safe, supportive, collaborative environment. I'm really encouraged for next time's presentation with Tanya Johnson and Wendy Parker, that's going to highlight some of that universal work, but also where do we need to take a deeper dive. Level two is effective teaching. So now every single teacher in Cedar Rapids Community School District now has a common instructional framework called the New Art and Science of Teaching. This is a requirement from the state, but I'm happy to say that Cedar Rapids was where the state when we implemented and so that will continue to be the common language and explicit instructional components that's a growth-based model, not punitive, it's all about, you can get better at anything in your classroom and encouraging that. So that's the common language for instructional coaches. And then third, the third level is the guaranteed viable curriculum, which is what Cynthia highlighted in regards to, we got feedback from our teachers that says, yeah, we've had access to things, but it wasn't the same for our area, it looked different. If you're an elementary teacher, you're teaching all content and if my curriculum map for math looks like this and then my curriculum map for literacy looks like this and are different, that's actually causes more work for a teacher to translate. So we've created common frameworks so that things are more accessible, easier for our teachers to understand and we have what's called a professional learning community process where our teams that teach the same thing can actually get together around their students' work and have access to that common teaching vocabulary, the intervention systems and the guaranteed viable curriculum. We've just gotten tight, much tighter about all of that. So I'd say that's for all kids, not just the targeted groups. Thank you.
We need to do six schools and show two categories, I think I'm getting excited about all this stuff, but that just seems like you're going to be jumping around for that. So Cynthia, how many of those schools that you really could share with us, I don't think we should draw a list, but other schools?
Well, two of the schools at the middle school level, that was Franklin and Harding that did that and I think in all the buildings, it's exceptional work done by a lot of people. So I'm not sure that they were doing anything much different or much ordinary than all the other buildings, they just see subgrader results for them. I know that both of those buildings really were again pushing that literacy work. I do know that Harding was really excited about their work with standard-based grading, the fact that they were using standards-referenced instruction instead of just, you know, sometimes the hit and miss stuff that happens with the standard grading system. But it really was kind of collaborative efforts throughout the district, a lot of similar things done in similar buildings, which is great because it does show that all the buildings did well. It just happens that these two buildings did extraordinarily well. So, and you see great things happen in a lot of places. I think about in my own building, we were targeted for students with special education goals in reading last year and this year through some targeted work, working with those students and really looking through their IEPs and individual things, Taff was number one in that. We, of all the six middle schools, and I looked at all of our surrounding middle schools as well. The Marion schools, I'm data guy. The Marion schools, you know, and whatnot, so so proud of that. So it shows that when you do have targeted work in specific areas, you really can make progress.
I'd say data guy also will help in compared with.
Yeah.
That's right.
So following up on what Dr. Deminsky said, was there any one measure that we saw that was responsible for a lot of these increases or was it just, because you know, looking at what the state is looking at here, what was it, you know, the performance profile measure, was there one thing responsible for a lot of the growth or was it just things all over the board, you know, targeted like you said?
So the high reliability schools framework is a school-based model, so it's common language for our entire district, but each school looks at their data and makes the plan for their kids in their school. So the high schools, as Director Phillips was highlighting earlier, the school that reduced, they still have their special education category, but they had three other designated categories, actually I think it's maybe four other designated categories, but as they targeted their work for those particular categories. So for example, they knew they needed to increase gen ed access for their English language learners and so that's what that particular school worked on, both the instructional designs and supports that those students needed. So I would say it's the targeted direct instruction universally across all of our schools that caused the improvement, but the strategy used at the elementary level was different than that used at the high school level, but it was having that common language and a system to analyze what the targeted needs were at each building.
Yes, so two thoughts, the complexity of the work is going to end up being where each school is going to make their specific school plan, but what I appreciate so much and what I was very excited about when, to transition into Cedar Rapids, is the high reliability schools framework because that is a research-based process where we know that first and foremost, we have to have a safe and supportive collaborative environment for anything else to happen. So because all of us are making that our initial focus and then from there we build on, we have to know what it is we want kids to know and we have to know how they're going to know it. And so when we can get crystal clear around that, that framework really allows us to do that. do that. So that's a common language across all schools, yet the specific work within each of those is very individualized. But I will commend the district for the resources and support to adopt that framework because that is a difference maker and I think we're seeing how some of that's living out. One of the things I was going to say at the high school level specifically with this work was around equity and access issues. And so really going in and auditing some various areas there to make sure that first and foremost, when we talk about tier one and universal core, that every child has access to any course and any opportunity that they need. And then our job is how do we support them to gain that? So, thank you.
And then also, I forgot my question. Give me a second here. Oh, so amongst all three school levels, we still had IEP as a focus area going forward. Is that something that we, so you know, our system of targeting is something that we want to do going forward? Is that something we have the resources? Do we need more resources? Those are oftentimes, you know, obviously it's all a funding issue from the state and everything, but is that something that we need to really be focused on and get more for in order to make those increases?
Yeah, I think if you talk with Wendy Parker, who is executive director of her special services, she was saying it is an area that we have to continue to focus on. She and her team along with the building leaders, we're updating our practices in each of those areas and looking for those opportunities where we might need additional resources. And so this is one of the areas where we do get additional resources. We're able to find things in special areas where, and with this data, it would target us where we probably should provide more support and more resources.
I just have one quick question. Is there any collaboration between teachers, say in an elementary school that previously was targeted in IEP category that come out of that target group? Are those teachers helpful to teachers in other buildings who are still in that target category or have targeted populations? Is there any collaboration across buildings, I think is what I'm asking?
Yeah, I think that really this day is, you know, we just gave this day and so we haven't really entered into that stage. What we do know is the principals do collaborate a lot in their meetings around their school improvement plans. So if you've got a focus area around IEP or African-American students, what are you doing to address that? And so in the administrative team meetings, they do collaborate a lot on their plans.
The little school teams actually do running walks in each other's buildings to look at best practice as well. But I do, I know of, I know of, well Eric Maybank can comment to this, but I know of a couple of circumstances where our evidence shows that within one school, maybe a particular grade level team had different results, like an anomaly with major growth and that we married them with another elementary school who needed different, were asking a different set of questions. So we have intentionally created some of those opportunities, but I think it is an area of opportunity for us to really know that we have different results and around our track, how do we meet on each other's strengths that way?
Yeah, I think one of the things, like I said, I've been here a long time, one of the things that was always a little bit frustrating to me as a building leader is that I didn't know other people's scores. And so we have them very transparent. So all the building leaders now know who's scoring well, who's doing well at a specific grade level or a specific subgroup. So we are having those conversations and for example, X school is doing very well in third grade with special ed kids or African-American kids. What are you doing? Because we need to start sharing that learning. You know, is it strategic, instructional strategies? Could be relationship building. There's a lot of different factors. And so yes, to answer your question, we are studying that and the data is now transparent. Everybody sees each other.
The other things we have as far as sharing strategies between buildings, in the middle school, and this is true in the high school and elementary as well, we have Curriculum Connection Days on Fridays. So some days on Fridays, we're doing professional learning within our building and other days, teachers are getting together in job-alike groups throughout the district. So specifically the question about special education, roughly about once a month, all the special education teachers from middle school are getting together to discuss those kind of practices and ways to move forward. And I do it also by mothers as well. So some of our significant disabilities teachers will get together, some of our moderate teachers and some of our grad one teachers will get together. Additionally, we have some vertical articulation that happens when we have, at the end of the year and the start of the year, is we have our counselors and our special education teachers meeting with the levels above us and the levels below us in order to make this seamless transition from students from one level to another. Oftentimes a student with disabilities may have just a small tweak to their educational program that makes a significant difference. So we kind of feel like, well, why should we reinvent the wheel? Let's talk elementary, let's figure out what worked well with that child, let's move them through middle school and then let's make sure the high school knows about that program as they move forward. We've found a lot of success with that.
Just one last kind of big picture question, I guess. You know, we heard from the Cedar Rapids Education Association earlier about the reality of, you know, what goes on in the teacher's classroom. And then, you know, you said you're a data guy, like to look at data too and want to kind of understand things through that. Is there ever any, like, how do we feel about these measurements? You know, I know we're stuck with them, we're, you know, forced into doing them by state law and federal law and everything like that, but just want to, you know, is there any tension ever between the realities of the teacher's classroom and taking the time out to do these sorts of things? You know, just from your perspective as administration, you know, working with teachers, everyone's got their role to play. Just any thoughts on that?
So the, you're absolutely right, this is a one-time measurement and we see it as, it's an annual measurement that shows us from year to year how we're doing from a big picture, not just from the assessment, but also there's a survey called the Conditions for Learning Survey that's new as part of requirement for our state with ESSA, which actually assesses all the things that you're just discussing of like how safe do you feel in your school? And our students get a bit of that. It's grades four and five?
Six through 12, but they're developing.
Four and five, right, for this year.
Yes.
Yeah, and so, and so all students six through 12 participate in that. So all of those metrics become part of our Iowa school performance profile. But I, the team might make fun of me with my circles, but I think about things from a really broad perspective. That's state level data, but when we dig in on our district level data, our district data that drives our conversations are district level assessments. And then every school conducts these HRS surveys, so those high reliability school surveys, which are 360 measurements actually. So the staff takes a survey, we send them out to our parents as well and then students from intermediate grade level all the way up through 12th grade. And so they give us feedback on that safe, supportive, collaborative environment. That becomes even more meaningful to us because it is our data. Fast screening assessments is one of our screeners and then also at the middle school level, we have the iReady screener as well. Those are more frequent and tell us more immediately right now how our students are doing. The state's having conversations around making, there actually are screeners for social, emotional, learning behaviors as well and math screeners too that we can invest in and use for our district as we move forward. So those, and those screeners are not achievement measures, but rather screening for how our kids are performing on benchmark and then inform our instruction as we move forward. But the reality is we also don't want to over-assess because instruction and that daily community experience for a teacher is so important. That's where the government's the road. And so not overtaxing our teachers, but yet giving them the relevant tools that they need. So I think we're finding that better balance, but we, getting feedback from our teachers of like what's too much and then what's just enough. And then next, the next board presentation with Tanya Johnson and Wendy Parker, again, I think we need to get to that next level of question about the reality of the classroom and what our teachers are experiencing every day.
Has there ever any situation where the state would allow, you know, a waiver on anything if we had our own district, you know, things that's just, we have to do what they can add on top, but it's not?
Yeah, we can do all additions, but this is just a-
They say in terms of those things, okay.
And I think that, you know, the one area that she talked about, the conditions of learning, is I think data that we've got to dig into more. Even if you look at that data across the state, it is the lowest measure of all the measures, that conditions of learning. And so we see the state level, that there are issues around safety in schools and the environment and student engagement, but we're right there as well. It's one of our lowest also. And so it is a data point that at least points to what I think our teachers are feeling, their staff is feeling and the feedback that we're getting of what really is happening in the classroom. So even though, you know, they have these assessments, there's good learning out of these assessments to really point our work.
One last piece, just a differentiation in that last slide that Rod had, that up that said compliance versus support. The way that Iowa, our state has implemented Every Student Succeeds Act feels much more supportive versus our former act of which I left behind felt very punitive. Just, I've, I'm old enough to have lived through the experience and which was, maybe not, it wasn't, not intended that way, but the way that our state has implemented ESSA, our site visit that comes on the 24th through 26th, they want to learn with us and also find out what we need and what do our teachers need. So I'm looking forward to that site visit as a true measure of support.
Thank you. Thank you all, please.